I might want to try. Go grab it real quick before we...
Had a couple of minutes.
I got a hotspot.
Oh, okay, I can just use yours.
Yeah, I'm not coming to like at all here apparently.
Yeah, can I?
Yeah, do what you gotta do.
Well, no. There you go.
Now you're on.
Oh, okay. Now I can go over to here. All right. Oh, it is. Oh, says I'm still not connected.
Well, yeah, it's bad for you.
I know.
Technology's great in my work.
Like to call the meeting to order, please stand for the flag.
Fideligence to the flag of the United States of America. Public religious standing.
At this time, county will administer the oath of office to the newly elected board members. Yeah. Yeah.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations, sir.
The next item on tonight's agenda is the election of the Board of Education Officers. The next item on tonight's agenda is the election of the Board of Education Officers. The next item on tonight's agenda is the election of the Board of Education Officers.
Can we have an executive session for that? Can we have an executive session for that? Can we have an executive session for that? Do I have a motion for that? Do I have a motion for that? Do I have a motion for that?
Make a motion. Make a motion. Make a motion.
I make a motion. I make a motion. I make a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second. Second. Second.
Okay. 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 Mr. Farfalia, it's a second. Mr. Farfalia, it's a second. Mr. Farfalia, it's a second.
All in favor. All in favor. All in favor.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
We'll be back. We'll be back. We'll be back.[194.62]
I was sleeping. I bring my own. I'm too sleepy.
Bob's not giving me that coffee anymore.
Bob usually gives me coffee. You're not going to treat that?
Because I'm not going to forget it. There we go.
Okay, the meeting is back in session. And at this time, we have the election of the President of the Board of Education.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Patrick Swoboda to continue on as President of the Board of Education.
For second. And by Scott, all in favor? I believe that's unanimous.
Patrick?
Okay, now, I'll give a break.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we move on to the election of the Vice President of the Board of Education. Do I have a nomination?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mike Maurizio for Vice President.
Do we have a second? Mr. Harrington? And all in favor of that? That, too, is unanimous. And we have to take our oath of office.
Hi, Patrick. Everybody has support for the candidate.
Okay, the appointment of the Board of Education Audit Committee historically has been the President and Vice President. Do I have a motion to keep it the same as that? Ms. Scanlon? Mr. Farfalia? All in favor? That's unanimous. Yeah, I was going to say, I think. Well, okay, so down below, the District Clerk, Treasurer, Claims Auditor, all of these things have been already done. And the appointments have already been pre-registered, so do I have a motion to take the appointment of the Board of Education Officers as a group, all Section 5 there? 5 dot 1 to 5 dot 2.6? Mr. Harrington, Mr. McClintock, all in favor? That's unanimous.
I have no, I have an abstention. I have a conflict with
Okay.
fiscal advisor.
Okay. Okay. So that's all but Mike Schuster. Okay, and then the designations. Do we have any necessity for conversation for 6, 1, 2, and 3? Do I have a motion to take that as a group? Mr. Leone, second, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? That's unanimous. Authorizations, payroll, purchasing, budget transfers? Any any question on any of those, cash advances, board policies for conferences? Nope. Do I have a motion to take that as a group, 7, 1 to 9? Mr. Maurizio, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? That's unanimous also. The 8 is the redaption of Board of Education policies, authorization of revenue anticipation notes. Do I have a motion to take those as a group? Mr. Schuster?
I'll have to abstain on because of 8, too.
Okay. Mr. Farfalia and then Mr. McClintock, all in favor? That's unanimous. And now we adjourn the gone a blank organizational meeting. Do I need, do I have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Farfalia, Mr. Maurizio, all in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, now we move into our regular meeting. We'll call that into session at 7:28. I request a moment of silence for Mary B. Cosway, a retired food service worker in the North Syracuse Central School District, and Mary Vaughn, a retired teacher in the North Syracuse Central School District. And then we move into presentations, food service budget presentation. I know Ms. Swift looks forward to this every year, right?
I just wanted to put this slide up here because I think most of us kind of grew up with the food pyramid and we're used to looking at the food pyramid. And while that is still relevant, this is the picture of what we are trying to introduce to kids. USDA came up with this, and we're really just trying to remind students that really at least half of their plate should be filled with fruits and vegetables. And that's really what our meal pattern is focused around. So we, you'll be seeing more and more of these photos in the cafeterias. So just a different look at what the food pyramid is like these days for the students.
Not a pyramid.
That works.
It's colorful. My wife would always have a problem when she was feeding the kids, like she wanted their plates to be colorful.
Yep.
I didn't care if all things were orange, but she made a big deal about it.
An interesting thing happened this past year. They created a study and looked at school districts throughout the United States and compiled a lot of data, which has been very useful for all of us. And one of the things they looked at were participation rates in all of the school districts, because as you know, we're struggling with participation. And they found that participation rates were dropping. And with the rates majority of the students that were pulling out of the school lunch program were students that were paying full price for meals. And we are finding that same trend here in North Syracuse. It's a little disconcerting. Of course, we want to feed everybody. But we have been focusing on free and reduced. Obviously, those children are the most needy. But we are still reaching out to those paid students, so we are still struggling to find a way to reach the masses. And in some of our schools, we really see that trend. Lake Shore, for example, the participation rate is really low. We're looking at about 37% participation rate. Where you're looking at the Roxborough campuses, and we're looking at, I think Roxborough Elementary is up around 61%. So there's quite a disparity there. And some of that really ties into the economic situations in the buildings. This is an overview of our meal counts for the last few years. And what I did was we stuck a bar in there for the, when the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act kicked in. Just to kind of show you, give you a snapshot of the real impact that this has had on our meal counts. One of the things that's interesting is that, of course, we have to look at enrollment when we're looking at meal counts. Our enrollment is down about 8%, but that's not really the question for why our meals are dropping so dramatically. It does come into play with our breakfast numbers, which are down about 6%. So, you know, you can really look at enrollment when it comes to breakfast numbers declining. But obviously, looking at these numbers, it's very troubling. And again, we are trying to find ways to reach out to the students. We have done a lot of tastings this year, gone into the schools and had vendors come in and do some sampling and tastings. We've had vendors donate products to us. We've given away GoPro cameras, an e-reader. So we're trying to work with vendors, because obviously, they want to sell his product. We want to sell product to the students and be there if they need our services. So we're trying to make things fun for the students. We're asking for suggestions from the students. And we are finding that when they're tasting the product and sampling in the cafeterias, that they're more apt to buy that product when it's menued the next few times through. So it's really been a big help. And what you're seeing here is about a 29% decline in lunch sales. Excuse me. And this goes back to that study that they did, looking nationally at meal counts declining. And again, some of our schools are doing pretty well with our numbers in terms of how many students we're feeding. But again, it's Roxborough, or excuse me, it's Lake Shore, it's Cicero Elementary School. The secondary schools are, we're really having a hard time reaching those students. And I know Donna said in the past that part of that reason, especially at CNS, is we have kids coming in late because they may not have morning classes. We have kids leaving early, and we have kids attending BOSI's. So our meal counts are really struggling, especially at CNS.
You had the carts, like, you know, the bagel carts or whatever that you had for breakfast. Are you still doing that?
We did attempt this year. We put out at Gillette Road, we started, we do grab and go breakfast for the students. But we also put carts, a cart by the door and tried to reach more students, especially at breakfast time. And we saw a slight uptick in sales for a short time, and then it kind of died off again. At the high school level, we opened our coffee breakfast area. And while we're not selling a lot of breakfast to the students, we are selling a lot of a la carte beverages. They may just grab a muffin and go. And at least they're getting something in their system, so we're happy with that. It may not be a reimbursable meal, which we would love to sell to the students, but I hate to see somebody go hungry, so it's doing okay. Junior high, we're really struggling there because the kids are kind of cordoned off in a separate area and the cafeteria is so far away. So we are looking at trying to do something and moving breakfast closer to the students in that building. It's a little difficult because it's a mad rush and I'm worried about people being trampled. But we have looked at ways to operate our cash registers with handheld equipment, that type thing. And technology is getting much better, so I think we're moving towards something that's usable for the students. This is a payroll sheet to show you, if we flip back to the meal chart, as you saw when we were selling more meals, obviously, our payroll was much higher. We have been really struggling and working on payroll expenses. That's a huge expense for us. And as you can see, we have been slowly managing our payroll. I was here last year and we were talking about some situations where we're moving people from one building to the other. We were not filling positions if need be. We're still continuing to do that. Donna and I meet on a regular basis with the cook managers and union representatives and really look at our participation rates versus our production rates in the buildings, what we like to call meals per labor hour. And while most of our elementaries, we've done a lot of adjusting, are doing pretty good. They're hitting their target levels. Again, it's our secondary buildings where we're really struggling. And we're continuing, we've had a couple retirements, so we're continuing to look at how we can make some more adjustments for the start of next school year. And this is a troubling slide. This is our fund balance. Obviously, you all know that we keep funds separate from the general fund. And again, we put the bar in for the beginning of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act and the impact that this has had on us financially. It's concerning because we don't have a lot of money left in our coffers. And if we don't see a turnaround fairly soon, we're going to have to start looking at other avenues for serving meals, whether that be money from the general fund or contract companies. So again, you know, the staff is committed. We are looking at any way we can to reach out to the students, to reach out to the parents, and make ourselves available for their needs.
Jeff has historically been rather collaborative with, you know, even with, like, we had stuff with providing concession services or like, I think one of the booster clubs, he actually used food service to provide a meal for their banquet and, you know. And I know that they made concessions on pay for those types of services.
Yep, we do, our catering program is growing. We would love to do banquets for all of the booster clubs. I know sometimes they're looking to go outside of the facility, and we understand that. Staff development days, we're providing products for the principals or the administration. And again, it's a nice little way for us to pick up some money, some revenue. So we are eager and willing to try to do that wherever we can. This slide really shows where we have expenses and where our revenue comes from. The interesting thing here is that, going back probably 10, 12, well, 20 years ago even, if you look at the revenues back then, it was really kind of a mirror image of a pie chart. And our meal sales and our a la carte sales were kind of 50/50. And part of this Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act is that they have limited what we are able to sell to the students. And I think it's a good idea. I don't think we should be filling the children with junk. But over the years, we had started selling baked products instead of fried products. But this past year was the first year where they really tied our hands, and we're seeing that impact financially. And then on our expenditure side, as you can see, only 40% of our expenses really goes into food. Again, a majority of our expenses is our personnel, our insurance, our retirement. And again, the other in there tends to be repairs, equipment. And, you know, I know John's sitting back there, but his staff has been wonderful in helping us keep our costs down. They take care of a lot of repairs for us, pretty much fix everything they can except for refrigerant issues. So they've been a huge help financially.
Now, do you have difficulty finding vendors for the, you know, the food costs? Since we've made that switch to, you know, we always kind of joke about, you know, whole wheat pizza crusts. Like, is it difficult to find people? Because it doesn't seem like, when we've seen bids in the past, it doesn't seem like there's a litany of people that are lining up for that.
We're in the process of opening bids right now for next school year. We had one company bid on our grocery bid, one company bid on our bread products, and one company bid on our meat products. None of them are Cisco. Cisco has gone off in, followed an OGS contract, so they're not participating at all. We've lost a couple of the smaller vendors in the area, so we have Renzy out of Watertown. And then we have Deli Boy, and really Ginsburg from down south, they're not coming up this way. Gas prices are more expensive. The markup that they used to put on our food has shrunk because the food is so expensive that we're buying that they're trying not to pass on too much cost to us, so there isn't a lot of competition out there. And it is hard on us. Above and beyond that, the manufacturers aren't producing the products that we need or in the volume that we need. One of the things I was talking to Donna about today, which was very concerning as we were looking at the bids for next year, is that, I'm sure you've all heard about this bird flu and how they've had to slaughter outrageous amounts of birds. One of the companies that we use quite a bit is Jennie-O Turkey. We even process commodity items with our government turkeys. That company will probably not survive this. They lost a majority of their crop, but as we were opening bids last, the other day, through BOSI's, the price jump has been incredible that they are anticipating for the fall. Chicken patties that I was buying last year in the fall have probably gone up $25 a case. There's 144 chicken patties in a case, so you can see my food costs skyrocketing. And it's not only chicken. If you think about it, the egg population is gone. So I suggest, first of all, you all go out and buy mayonnaise, because that's going to go through the roof. But we, there were a lot of no-bid products, so the companies didn't even want to offer us. We buy a lot of precooked hard-boiled eggs, not even an option. Even the breading that we use on products is impacted by this, any baked goods, any baking mixes, because there's dried egg in there. So at least in the fall, until this turns around, we're going to experience a very high food cost, which is obviously troubling for us. As part of the study that they created, not only were they looking at meal counts throughout the United States, they were also looking at overall food costs and labor costs and other costs. And as you can see, North Syracuse in the bluish-purple color, we're actually doing pretty good compared to national averages on our food costs. As again, we're working very hard to find products kids will eat, but at a cost we can afford. But as you can see, our labor benefits are higher than the national average, which was represented in that pie chart we just saw. So, you know, again, we're looking at how we can best use our labor sources that we have and make them as efficient as possible without creating more costs for ourselves.
Do you have any idea, I mean, this is the national average, do you know approximately where we stand as far as local school districts?
And that's a good question. I tried to get some of those figures before everybody was gone for 4th of July weekend with this study coming out. I can tell you that Liverpool pays their staff in the same, you know, their salaries are similar to ours. As we've been, as we've been looking at contracts throughout the area, they really vary in terms of sick time benefits. So it's hard to say, to compare apples to apples, unless you just strictly look at the dollar amounts that we're paying out. This is everybody's favorite slide. We all saw this last year. As part of the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act, school districts are required to increase meal prices. And to kind of give you, because most of you have heard of, heard this before, to give you the brief breakdown of this, if you were to look at the state and federal reimbursement rates, as free $3.09, and subtract the paid difference, we're looking at $2.70. This is the target amount that we should be paying for, or we should be charging for a meal, per the USDA. Our weighted average is $2.22. So we looked at the amount of meals we sold at the elementary level, which is one price, the middle school level, which is another, and the high school, junior high, and came up with that weighted average. So as you can see, we're well below the suggested selling price. Above and beyond this, even with $2.70, if you factor in our retirement costs, insurance, uniforms, food costs, paper costs, a meal is about $3.34 to put out there to a child. So you can see why we're struggling financially. But with that being said, there are a lot of parents probably thinking, well, at $3.35, if that's what we were going to charge, I'm just going to pack my child's meal. So we're kind of caught in this situation where we need to increase prices. We need to watch our food costs, but we don't want to chase parents away. We want to be there as a good valued service for these families. So again, we have to increase lunch prices if we're not at that $2.70 threshold. So we looked at our food costs for next year, anticipating what's happening in the market. And what we're looking at is a 10 cent increase across the board at each grade level. And what we'd like to do is the elementary would become $2.10 for lunch, the middle school would become $2.35, and the junior high, high school would become $2.60. And then breakfast would also jump up a dime. And we're asking that you guys recommend that these prices be allowed.
Over the past few years, what have the incremental increases been?
Last year, it was 10 cents. The year before, I believe it was five. In the year that Louise left, I believe we had a 15 cent increase. So I, you know, I never like to see those big jumps of 25 cents or higher, because that really makes parents nervous, makes me nervous. But 10 cents, kind of, people can relate to that, and with the cost of living, I think most people will understand that. Does anybody have any other questions?
At least one school district I know of got out of the federal thing. Any idea how they're making out after?
Are you talking about a local school district here?
Yeah.
Okay. And if it's a school district I'm thinking of, they have a very low percent of free and reduced students. So it's really not feasible for us at this point because we would still have to provide meals out of our own pocket for the free and reduced students. So it would cost us quite a bit of money. I think Don and I analyzed that and we were looking at like a $230,000 loss if we were to do that. And I do know there's another school district in the area that just pulled their high school out. And he, they were struggling this year. It was a new change for the students in that area. And while they're thinking they'll do better next year and turn more of a profit, we're in that hard situation where there's enough free and reduced and we have some students who are very well off and we're just kind of caught.
Well, it's a good question.
You know, I don't know what her final meal counts were at the end of the year because they're selling a lot more items à la carte, so it's not a true traditional lunch in that sense. So they're not having to claim those meals and put those numbers out. But those kids are carrying around $5 and $10 to buy a sandwich where I think some of our students would have a real hard time paying $5 for a panini. Oh, yes. Well, two of our best sellers are any chicken product and then pizzas. So at those grade levels, we run chicken and, well, at the high school, we run it every day, both products. At the junior high, depending on our line space, because our serving lines are a little bit smaller, we typically run chicken three days a week and pizza every day. Breakfast, like the mini pancakes and the sauce, yep, yep. We do, we do try to run that. I think it's on twice in our six-week cycle menu. And it is fairly pricey, believe it or not. Sausage is very expensive and of course, it's high in sodium. And of course, we have those sodium levels that we have to follow. So we're trying to balance the regulations with what the kids will eat. And it's tough. Next year's the first year that we don't have a major implementation of a new requirement from the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act. So it'll be interesting to see now that we've kind of, every year, we're struggling and trying to figure out these regulations and how the kids are going to accept them. Next year's the first year we can kind of go in on the tail end of this year and just continue to try and find new products without having to worry about, oh, my gosh, you know, we know the sodium and the products we're already using. We know the kids are accepting of those products. So I'm hoping that that'll give us kind of a jump start for next year.
Liz, I don't mean to interrupt you. Thank you.
Does it beho, is it on?
It is.
Okay. Does it behoove us to look at doing more à la carte so you can make more money? Because as a parent, I, that's my biggest complaint for my kids is, well, there's nothing on à la carte, you know, that we, and I'm, that we would spend the money on. And could we make up more money in the difference of the money we're losing?
And we've been working on, you know, as I said, a lot of manufacturers aren't keeping up with these regulations because it's so cost prohibitive for them to create these products. So we've been out there, every time a new product comes on the market that we can buy that fits into the parameters of these new guidelines, we all attack the vendors because we want that product. So when they come out, we sample them. Some of them are a big hit, some of them aren't. But one of the reasons the manufacturers aren't making these products are they're all, have to be whole grain. So it's not like they can, say Deli Boy brings in 50 cases of a product that they think is going to work in the schools. None of the kids like it. Well, then they have to sit on these 50 cases because they can't sell them on the street because, you know, the convenience stores are all using white products or white flour. And so everybody's worried about bringing product in. The manufacturers are worried about making it. And again, you know, we're searching constantly for items.
But if we drop those two schools off, do we have to stick with the sodium content? Do we have to still stick with the whole wheat?
No, but we still have to feed those free and reduced children. So that's, you know, that's our big concern is how do we provide meals to those students out of our pocket? Are we going to make enough money? And we've really been watching what Baldenfield Schools has been going through. And right now, we're kind of sitting back saying, we're glad we weren't the guinea pigs for that because they're struggling.
Okay.
Well, do we know what, what is our free and reduced rate at the, at that secondary level?
At the secondary level? We're in the low 30s.
I mean, it's, there's still 30%. If it was in the 20s or teens, it would be a different story.
It should be higher because Rox Middle is at least 50% of their student population.
That's the junior high and high school.
Right.
Yeah, individual buildings. Roxboro, both Roxbirls are very high.
But those kids still feed up to the high school. So you, they should, those numbers should be higher. We're just, they're not just, they're just not doing it. They're just not.
That's a, that's a trend you see in a lot of, as kids get older, they tend to shy away from eating at the high school and junior high level. I mean, that's a problem across the United States.
But we pre-qualify our students. You know, if they qualify for, you know, other services outside of the district, they automatically qualify for free and reduced lunch.
Yes.
Which is not the way it used to be.
No. So students that receive Medicaid, a majority of them now are automatically qualified for free meals. So actually, our free and reduced meal rates have gone up about 2% over the past few years because we're now including Medicaid. We're hoping to feed those children. We're starting to see a slow rise in the free and reduced numbers, especially at the younger levels.
And it's latent. When a child goes through the line, they're, you know, if they're using their PIN or whatever, it, nobody knows.
Correct.
Who's paying what.
Yeah, that, that was an issue years ago, but that really is not on.
Is there a way for us to educate, you know, parents? Do we, do we reach out to them at orientations, like building orientation?
We do have staff that go to open houses. We put out free and reduced information. We have been starting to use Face, the North Syracuse Facebook page on a more regular basis, trying to reach out to parents about anything and everything.
Dress-up days, that was pretty neat.
Yep. Yep. So we're trying to reach out to the parents. We're, Don's even talking about us using Twitter at some point. I have no idea how to do that, but thank goodness we have Lori Cook because I'm sure she can help us out. We actually use School Messenger this year to reach out to some 12th grade parents about account balances, that type thing. So we're, we're trying to use everything available.
I just want to say I'm very, very concerned about the fund balance. At this rate, three years, we will have no money in that fund balance. I think we really need to do something, not just at our district level, reach out to other school districts, form a committee to try to come up with solutions to solve this problem.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward and Mr. Keegan is up again.
Good evening. Look, I know there's some new faces here, so I'll take a second and introduce myself. I'm John Ward. I'm the director of facilities for the district. And with me tonight, I have Paul Johnston. He's from King &amp; King Arc. And tonight, we're going to give you three updates on some capital or construction projects that we have. The first one is the junior high roof replacement and main gym floor replacement. Basically, this will be three roof areas or four roof areas on the junior high auditorium roof. And then we will replace the main gym floor and the large gym. As far as the timeline, construction documents have been started. Project planning is taking place in the past. The Seeker, you will vote on that resolution tonight. We'll do the voter authorization at the next board meeting, and I believe that date's incorrect. I think it's the 20th. After that, we'll have the public hearing on September 9th, and the public vote will be on September 3rd, 23rd. The nice part about the 23rd, and I have to thank Tommy for that, is it's a half day. So it will be a half day for students at Cicerone. It's some of the issues we've had in the past with votes. So that, that worked out very nicely. After that, the plan is to submit into New York State SED the following day. So what I have already done is paid King &amp; King to do the construction document work now, on the assumption the vote will go through. Regardless of what happens, that roof has got to be replaced. The documents need to be done. So, so we're going to get that done. So once that vote's over, we can get it in. We're hoping SED has added 10 positions or is adding 10 positions. So our hope is that the process is in six to eight months and it's three to four, and we can get this bid early February, at that timeframe, early March if, at the latest. Construction will begin right after school's out in the summer and finish up the major portion of construction by the start of school in September. And then we just have probably a month of some closeout documents. Wrap up and we should be wrapped up by October 1st. Budget for this project? Overall, it's a $1 million project. Estimates on the roof replacement is $400,000. Gym floor is $300,000. There's a large contingency we put in on the roof decking for the junior high roof. That roof has leaked for a while and we won't know what shape of that decking is till we get the roof. So we did throw some money in there. Originally, that had been selected for hardware upgrade, intruder locks at the junior high. That we completed out of the maintenance and operations budget this year. So the junior high has all intruder locks installed. So now all our buildings have intruder locks being locked from the inside of the classroom. Design and construction contingency was $100,000 and fees $125,000, and that, that works out to our $1 million budget. As far as funding for that, we'll use $150,000 from fund balance. State aid will be $185,000 to make the $1 million. So there will be no tax increase to the local.
$850,000.
Or $850,000, I'm sorry.
So there is no tax impact?
No tax impact.
And we're, and this is, I believe, we we vote later on, vote for this, correct?
Yeah, that's September 23rd.
Well, no, I think we vote.
Oh, oh, on the 20th, yes. You'll do the authorization on the 20th. Moving on, the next project that we have on the, on our list tonight is the main entrance security upgrade at the high school. What we're proposing there is we're going to move the guard station to the center of the entrance doors. Basically be an in-out, side and out on the other. Of course, during dismissal and arrival, everybody will be able to come in. Paul and I have worked on this for probably a good year with Melissa Julian at the high school. So I think we've got this, this ready to go now. We do have it in our budget line. So this, this project becomes, and I'll get into that in a minute, I'm getting ahead of myself. Timeline for this, construction documents are underway. We'll get them submitted next month. Hopefully, those are approved by the beginning of January. And we need to complete this project, if at all possible, by June 30th. Reason I say that is this is a capital outlay project with New York State. Basically, it's kind of a cash-for-cash project. We complete the project in this budget year and our aid ratio is refunded. So the thought with this is we've got it in this year. We'll continue perpetuating that every year. Look at strictly main entrances and how we can upgrade the security.
So now, does this mean that the security guard will be relocated permanently? It will not be at that rear station at all?
Correct.
So even evening time or that people will be directed to the front door?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the final one, and this is probably our most interesting and exciting one of the three that we have here. This is installation of the credit union in the bookstore area at the high school, well as creating a true commons area in the open area where the wall of distinction is. So what, we've spent a lot of time on this and we are very excited about this. The timeline for this, we have started. We've been planning now for probably a good six months. Have started construction. We started construction last week as far as demolition. Budget for this is $100,000, give or take. And the funding basically is coming from the maintenance and operations budget and I want to give you kind of a little idea of what, what the project's going to look like when it's.
Sure. So the purpose of this area was to create a space for students to gather in small groups. And really, the goal, really connected to the credit union as well, is to sort of generate that, that culture within the school of, or of learning happening wherever. So our hopes is that this space and these small group pods and areas throughout this, this space are areas where students and even, and classes are pulling out into these areas to work on small, small project, or small group projects and, and also lounge space. So it's really sort of transforming this area and creating kind of a collegiate-type feel space for students that I think they'll really appreciate and
This, it, it reminds me, we just had a BOSI's presentation a few weeks ago, and it was, you know, project-based learning mostly. And that's, you know, the spaces were set up very similar to this.
But, I mean, it's, it's something that you're seeing as a, as a larger trend in education. And I'm excited to, Syracuse really grabbing a hold of this. A space that I think really was rather underutilized, though I know at lunchtimes, it's, it's pretty chaotic in there. So it's really just sort of changing how students interact in this space. There still can be a lot of students in there. Really a multifunctional space. I was interested as we did this, Melissa Julian in particular commented that it would be interesting to start to have some of her administrative team meetings more out in the open in spaces like this. Start to model that, that group approach and really making that connection for students to how businesses have to work. And we all, we all need to be able to work together in team settings and really collaborate. And space.
Thoughts for like hooking laptops up and things like that?
Yeah. So the, the goal here was to have, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I think we talked about a wireless, wireless access in the area, you know, a technology-rich space. The whole space minus sort of the larger piece, as I'm looking at the screen, there's a large couch all the way to the right. But the rest of the furniture is, can be rearranged. There's, there's monitors on the walls. So we expect, or we're, we're building in the ability for people to work on things and then be able to throw their ideas up on screens and, and, you know, or using iPads or whatever devices they may have, just the ability to share information back and forth. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're excited, Don. So yeah, we're gonna, we'll put APs out through there so it will be all where, I don't think that's not really, we'll be all global. Everyone. And left of that, where the bookstore currently is, that'll be kind of, you know, as we started looking at it, it really became this open kind of concept of an open area where you can do anything. You can do some work in small, down the road, we probably won't get to it this really hoping that it becomes just a real
Have any negative impact on traffic flow during lunchtime?
You know, there's, and I'll just speak to the, the code aspect of that, and I'll let John speak to the, the actual student use of the space. So there's, there's, the amount of doors and hallways, as soon as you get, you take a turn to the ramp or go further to your right down the rest of the hallways, we've maintained that width. So the only thing that's really been taken away is this sort of extra area where I understand a lot of students used to sort of stand around and mill around. So we're, we're sort of changing that aspect of the space. But from a code and exiting perspective, you have, you actually have more space than you need. Your hallways are wider than required by code. Your hallways are wider than required by code.
But if I'm hearing what you're saying, you're actually probably going to reduce things that could be potential issues, if they're, you know, kids that are kind of loitering versus, you're keeping movement due to the fact that you've taken away the space for them to just stand, and, right, there's purpose to where they're going to be.
Yeah, we did that, and also on the far right, the one small wall partition you see at the very end along that couch, we turned that because that's the serving room door right that would kind of help separate it so that they can line up along that side wall. So, we've tried to cover all the bases we could think of to make everything run smoothly. Principals all are very excited, work out well, and we do think it's going to alleviate some of the issues bad just being in those areas.
Are we redoing that?
Nope, that's staying right there.
So, that's directly across from this. And I know that
Pardon me? Yes, and we have, we've kind of tossed a few ideas, I mean, there's been talk, do you do it somewhere else, do we use the seating there? All that seating can move, it's all very flexible, you can move it around, it's designed to be able to move. TV's no, we'll mount them because we might lose them.
They may walk.
There's talk that they may expand the wall distinction.
Thank you, Dan.
The wall behind it is a curved wall, so that one's really not a good location. One of the things that we've talked about with Dan Curry is to go a course below what is currently there, and we kind of projected how many people that we would bring in each year over the next eight to 10 years. We've been bringing in larger groups, we may need to shorten that down to only having two or at a max, three into our wall to be able to, at least right now, fit the space all the way across, because if you go all the way across that wall, you could probably still get about 25 more inductees over the next eight to 10 years.
At the same level that it is now, without adding a lower?
No, no, with adding a lower going across. There is a small space to the very left that we can also go to, and it may be a space anywhere from about four to six feet, maybe six by six, that we can access as well, but we're looking at going a tier below all the way across before we really need to make any other location adjustments.
And we can, when you get nominated, we can put it special place, right that entry, yep, next to the right next to the entry to the gym, that room there. Do we have any other?
I do, I just have one more question, because I see this as something new and popular. Will there be a method of reserving the space?
We haven't gotten that far yet, but I'm assuming that administration up there will have to give that some thought. Yes, people are going to have to sign up if they're going to use it during the day. But hopefully, hopefully, they will be interested in.
They'll embrace it.
For half the money? We really don't have any other spot up there with that kind of area that I can think. It's just one, you know, why that curves of all there, I don't know, piece we could utilize.
It is very neat, because it is a lot like Google with the collaborative workspaces that they have.
No, we're very excited, we think it's just going to be a great
I just have a couple of comments I want to add. First of all, the fact that this roof project is finally getting off the ground, there are some of us around the table that are extremely happy about that, because it's been raining in the auditorium over there for a couple of years, so we're glad that we finally have been able to put that together with no tax impact. To this project with the credit union, I also want to add that anything to do with the credit union, that the credit union is donating the equipment that's necessary for that, and I know some of you around the table have heard me talk about this before, but for the sake of the new board members, I want to thank both of you for the work that you've done with the student group up there, this credit union as a student board of directors, and they have been very instrumental in helping to design this space, so, thank you, we're really excited about this.
Great 10th grader at the helm there. And I'll add to that, that, you know, this design, the design of the credit union came from the students. We, they said, that's what you Here's just a 3D kind of view to get you a little better idea of what that space will look like. So, here we have, this is a long couch, monitor on these walls, seating with benched, or counter height chairs. This is just some individual seating, smaller workspaces, these are some and this right here is where the coffee shop. Then down here that you can just barely see, that's the credit union, will be on this side, and this area in here will be the
Is that all open?
Yes.
There's no more wall?
Nope, it's wide open, the wall's gone, there's actually, will be a security mesh screen that pulls across to secure that area, and we'll install one camera in that the credit union purchased to cover the credit union area. We have camera coverage in the commons area now.
Place next door too? Addition to the roof, like the repairs to the ceiling?
Yeah, once the roof's fixed, we'll worry about, we'll get the ceiling taken care Dial exercise. Can you hear? Do you have a slide we'd like to pass around real quick for you to just look at it, some of the different, go ahead, Paul.
So, this is a work in progress, this is a color board, and this is the small pictures, and I'll send this around. So, we put together So, that key, if you go back to the floor plan that had all the furniture with the numbers on it, that just shows you what you're getting, each piece of furniture. It was a helpful tool through the process, and then that color board pulls together all the other finishes, whether it's carpet or the materials for the furniture. Picture of what's happening in there.
Did change it up a little bit, normally we go, you know, fully green, blue, and white, some other colors in there, we branched out with colors. Still put a little blue in there, don't worry.
I didn't rock the boat too hard.
Do you think we'd be able to make other buildings if it's successful? I know it's kind of hard in some other buildings, there's not really a space.
We'd have to go through, now, that's something, as we're doing the building condition survey, we can kind of look at any.
I think what you want to find, and the district is you, this is a great space to experiment in, and as you sort of find your vision of what's education in the future for North Syracuse, you know, you may find that furniture adjustments within individual classrooms make a lot of sense. I think you're going to find that this works really well at the high school, and it may, but it may not be a one-size-fits-all, as you go down the other grades, there's some different ideas, there's a lot of great classroom spaces or breakout spaces that are closer to the classrooms or right off classrooms, a lot of variations in this theme, but still that all embrace, you know, sort of project-based learning, and, you know, the real goal is sort of breaking down those individual classrooms and getting, whether it's departments talking back and forth more, or students just making that connection to abstract things like math, making that connection to how does this apply to the real world? We, as architects, really follow the lead of districts and where you see education for you, and each district has to make that decision. And then we can really come in, we can come in with the architecture and really at your facilities, your existing facilities to support your education better.
I think if you look back at the projects that we've had in the past, and you look at some of the first elementary schools that were done, and compare them to Smith Road, there's a major difference between those building spaces.
There's some great decisions.
They're all wonderful spaces, but Smith Road has some
Big leaps that were made there.
Yeah, some very innovative, you know, things that are there, and I think this speaks to the fact that, you know, we are kind of updating our style of educating students, putting a priority on supporting teachers and their work.
You'll see, it's funny, for years I had to leave New York State to find things like this and go to conferences and see what's happening. It's exciting in the last, I'll say, five years that more districts are really grabbing hold of this. So, you'll see a lot of spaces where they're experimenting, they may not even have a space like this, they're experimenting and making do in the rooms they have now, where they'll cut a few extra doors in or do something basic to get started. I would say the one that's probably really grabbed on and done a whole, like a whole building more systemic, is probably East Syracuse in their Pine Grove Middle School, which we went and visited a number of years back.
Now, does that work collaboratively with their STEM program that they have there?
Yeah, so that's directly connected to their STEM program, and they're, you know, they have, you know, about five classes and five teachers that work all together, and they'll finally, you know, so that project should be done in about a year, so it'll be interesting to see the complete spaces now really supporting how they teach and how they move from, you know, the mass of 125 students. So, that's one, but I would say a space like this, this will probably, that I'm aware of, and I don't know what's happening at Liverpool or District, not necessarily directly tied to, but I think this space is going to be, as far as a student union, we're calling it sort of a student union or commons area, I think this is amount of different types of furniture and spaces, I think it's special. Yep, if necessary. At the same time, we had to balance the fact that the principals were very concerned with furniture walking away. So, it's you can move it, but you have to be intentional about it.
One thing I, we have done
Come through their presentation, it's just, it's sort of walking you through a project-based sort of mode of thinking, and you're moving from all their furniture throughout, you
Thank you, guys.
Great.
Thanks. Hey, we have no comments from the audience. Do we have any board committee reports or comments? Anlon?
Committee reports, but I just
There's, no, Bob, that's what I'm
No, Bob, I know. I just want to say
You don't have to take his place.
No, I just want to say that I had the privilege to participate in the graduation ceremony, and how pleasant everything was, it went, ran very smoothly, and Melissa Julian did a great job, and everyone who was part of the big night for the students did a wonderful job.
Yeah, I was going to say Diane Clancy does a wonderful job organizing that, and it, you could see the relationship that Melissa has with those students, so, you know, the fact that she's moving on hit me kind of hard that night, to be honest with you, because she, there were several students that came through that, you know, it was either a big hug, or, you know, you could see that she had built relationships with quite a few of those students, you know, and the only comment that I have to say is, Annette really has to listen to other music, you know, just branch out, it's
I'll work on that for the next year.
But that's all. Then, Annette?
Just a couple of comments, I was also going to comment on graduation, but I think that you've, you know, pretty much summed it up, but congratulations to the 636 that did cross the stage that night. One other event that I wanted to mention since our last board meeting, on June 20th, the 36th Annual Spira's Swamp Run was held at Oneida Shores Park on a Saturday morning, and it was administered by the CNS cross-country team, the CNS Boys Track Coaching Staff, and Syracuse Chargers Track. Special thank you to Mark Spira from Spira's for all of his donations, along with Fleet Feet of Syracuse, Burn Dairy, Frito-Lay, Fryhoofers, and Pepsi, many, many generous donations that helped with that event. There were 536 runners that finished the mile run, and the two elementary schools with the largest number of runners were Cicero, Allen, Lake Shore Elementary. I believe that all elementary schools were represented this year, and thank you to the many parents, athletes, coaches for their hard great, great event, and it was a nice day also.
Okay, so, we'll move into the routine action items. Do I have a motion to take A, B, and C as a group? Mr. Marizio, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? That's unanimous. The discussion action items, we will add to this. In the presentation that was a part of Food Services, we have to approve the lunch pricing that was in the presentation, it's an increase of 10 cents, you know, so it will go up to that $2, and what was it?
$2.60.
$2.60 at high school.
It's 10 cents to every school, okay, so, we will have to add that as, it looks like that will be K, to approve the lunch pricing as per the presentation from Food Service. The acknowledgement of gifts, this is a long one, and, you know, I think we should say specifically, if you look through them, it's North Syracuse Education Foundation has donated, you know, several items, you know, through the grant system that they have, as well as some of our booster clubs, and, you know, secondary education. A lot of these things would not be possible, especially without the North Syracuse Education Foundation. So, let's just go through them, the North Syracuse Central School District received a donation of $1,545.28 from the NSCF to go towards the purchase of 15 new lab, seven-inch tablets, 12 Nice Shop 90-degree converters, and one trip light charging sync station. For the science department, the North Syracuse Education Foundation donated one garment rack, shoe rack, one bin totaling $135 for the 2015 grant winner, the Green Closet at CNS High School. The Education Foundation also donated a Yamaha mixer, stage series, a 16-by-4 stage series snake, XLR 20 Pro, I'm guessing these are the cabling for a grant winner, can you hear me now, or can you hear me, is that now or no? At Gillette Road Middle School, Roxborough Road Middle School, and CNS High School. The Education Foundation also donated a video boombox listening center and automatic stereo with mono headphones totaling $366.95. The previous grant was $1,169. And the grant winner is, what did you say, at CNS High School, the number five is North Syracuse Education Foundation donated five Mapek's bass drums and carriers totaling $1,735 for the grant winner, All About the Bass Drums at Roxborough Road Middle School. $1,735 for the grant winner, All About the Bass Drums at Roxborough Road Middle School. The Education Foundation also donated one model 75, 28, 35, two-stage vacuum pump totaling $775 for the grant winner under the dome at the North Syracuse Junior High School. This, something that was discussed, was this actually coincides with a previous donation that they made, so this is an ongoing thing for them, that they're continuing to support that department up there. The North Syracuse Education Foundation donated three Mobi tablets, two-year licenses, plus two tablets donating, totaling $444.95. The winner was Mobi Max Tablets from Gillette Road Middle School. The Education Foundation donated one Toys of the Trade Dollhouse Furniture, Army Men, Play Food, Puppet Sandbox, Cash Registered Toy Kitchen, Community Helper Puppets, Sand for the Sandbox, Dollhouse Family, Baby Doll, Doll Accessories, and Bricks, and Legos totaling $616 for the grant winner, Play Therapy Room at the Roxborough Road Elementary School. Each year, the Rochester Institute of Technology awards grants in the amount of $20 for each Project Lead the Way student who receives, who receives college credit. The grant money is used to improve and update and make purchases to benefit the Project Lead the Way students. The money received this year for 49 students applying for college credit for the total of $980. The CNS Boys Soccer Booster Club donated $100 to the North Syracuse Central School District to purchase a new scoreboard at the Gillette Road Middle School Field Number Seven Boys Varsity Soccer Field. Now, could we possibly have a status of how that's coming, because obviously that $100 is not going to cover that totally, so I imagine, just, just for reference. So, the recommended board action is to accept with gratitude the above gifts to the North Syracuse Central School District. Do I have a motion, Ms. Scanlon, Mr. Leone, all in favor? That's unanimous. Again, I don't think that we can say, you know, or show our appreciation enough, especially to the Education Foundation, because when these grant winners were at the last board meeting, or the board meeting that they were at last, the foundation was also discussing meeting the needs of some other things that have been removed from our budget several times, so, you know, I just, we, you know, really, really appreciate the work that they do for us. Do we need a discussion on what would be B through K? Wait, we do, because we will take an executive session for J, correct? Do, do we have any questions on the Teaching Assistant and LPN unit contract that's in here? Questions? Okay, so we will, do I have a motion to take B through K as a group? Mr.?
I just wanted to discuss, I had a question on, um, they had the.
The.
I did just, it's a, it's a question on the, I think it's, is it bullet aid that came from Assemblyman Sterpie?
It is, it's $250,000 of bullet aid from Assemblyman.
That's just a one-shot.
It's a one-shot deal, and historically, we don't fund positions with it, but because our STLE grant is running out, we talked with Assemblyman Sterpie, and he, you know, we explained that we really need another year of these coaching positions, and so that's.
Did we, we get any aid at all from our senator?
Yes, yes, well, it's on its way.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and what's unfortunate about those is we have, in the past, been promised money and then not gotten it, so, you know, we have been a little more cautious with spending, you know, because of that, you know, we spend the money until we have the check in hand. So, do I, do I have B through K as a group? Mr. McClintock, Mr. Leone, all in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, the personnel reports, do we have any questions for personnel reports A, B, and Nope, okay, so can we take those as a group? Mr. Merizio, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? That is unanimous. We have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with Food Service, Principals, and Middle Managers Bargaining Units, three legal matters relative to potential litigation, and the employment record of six individuals with no action to follow. Do I have a motion? Mr. McClintock, Mr. Leone, all in favor? Unanimous.
It's the phantom from the junior high has decided to come down here.
Oh, that was a good one. One of these days I'll learn how to run this stuff. Trouble with my iPhone 4.
Oh, well.
That's what I got, Father. Looks great. Yep, and my son, my son.
He's doing so well though, Con, he's fine.
Drive something, see, uh, oh, you gotta get the whole, everything, yeah, give him those auto box cases and stuff, that thing is huge.
I'm managing, I, good thing, I mean, I brought this, but I'm getting on, I'm figuring it out.
Okay.
I'm more of an Android person.
It makes sense.
But I'm not a, not a big fan of Apple, but I don't want Mike to hear that.
Yeah, there's some.
I'm not a big fan of Apple. Oh, just thought you'd.
Well, that's right.
Sure Android makes some great tablets we could all use, some Samsungs.
I gotta, I won't be joining you, I'll see you all soon. Right? Go to my house.
Hey, congrats.
Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you, Scott.